2021 City of Twalton Work Session. My computer says it's 113 degrees. I didn't know we were moved to Phoenix. And here in Zoom land, but this is unbelievable. Hopefully everyone's checking out their neighbors, elderly, kids, making sure they're okay. Making sure they're getting water and they're cool. So just like we do with COVID, check on your neighbors, make sure they're okay. So tonight we have a couple items on the agenda. First up is Urban Renewal District Number Two Public Visioning and Outreach Efforts. I see there's Jonathan Taylor. Hey Jonathan.
Good evening. Can you hear me because my fan is blowing in the background? So.
Can you hear me?
And I have all my lights on. Wonderful apartment life. Uh, so good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Tonight I am going to turn it over to Nick who will recap our first scope of work. Kind of visioning session that we had with council. A month ago, this will be a preliminary and proposed scope of work regarding what we heard then. And also kind of what staff needs in order to do what council has envisioned. I will share my screen. And I will turn it over to Nick. Oh, wrong, wrong PowerPoint. That's later. Well, Nick, go ahead and get started and I will pull this one up.
Sure, no problem. Uh, thanks council for having me here. Uh, glad we can all be sweating in our own homes instead of sweating together in a, in a real meeting room. Uh, so as Jonathan said, I was helping the city come up with a proposed scope of work for the vision for the central city downtown area. Um, this was all in the context of urban renewal. So we originally did a feasibility, a feasibility study for the area. Where we showed that there was significant financial capacity here. Um, but city councils suggested before we move any further on this. The area really does need to have a cohesive vision that everyone can unite around. Um, it's great to have capacity, but in order to know where you want to spend it, um, having that vision will be crucial. So a couple of months ago, I was with you at another work session where we presented a whole long laundry list of the potential tasks that a lot of other communities um, do include in various visioning projects. And you all weighed in to let us know which of those tasks you thought would be uh, most and least important um, for the city of Twalton. Uh, from that I worked with Jonathan to pull together a proposed scope of work uh, that could be included in an RFP that you could send out um, to the um, consulting community and see what proposals you get back. So from that, um, I think Jonathan, we can move to the, the next slide here. The basic question, um, what approaches was this? And Jonathan, is this, this actually looks different from the PowerPoint that we have in the um, in the presentation. Is this the one that we presented previously?
It's stated in the second, Jonathan.
Okay, I am clearly struggling tonight.
So the, the overall question for tonight, because I think we can keep going even without the visual aids. Um, is, does the council approve of the proposed work program? Um, and timeline for the district two visioning? Ah ha, uh, literally the words that were coming out of my mouth and now they are on the screen.
Thank you.
Uh, we're looking for council approval on the work program and timeline. Just a reminder of the overall project timeline. Um, as it relates to urban renewal, we are in the phase uh, four for district two visioning. Um, so this is getting close to the end of this graphic here. Uh, where we've come up with a future work. Um, and there would be in theory, an urban renewal plan adoption for this area down the road after a vision is completed. Uh, the next slide shows the uh, study area boundary. This was the study area that we looked at for the feasibility study. I know council actually mentioned in the past that uh, it's possible that not the entirety of this area would need to be included in the visioning work. Um, so I do think that there is still an opportunity as you put the RFP out. Um, as you select your consultant team and you refine the exact contract and scope of work. Um, that you're going to be involved with. When you look at the particulars of the um, the public outreach uh, and the product that you're going to be giving back. I think you can refine the study area and say, you know what? Let's only focus uh, on these areas west of I five or whatever the case is. Um, if you think it does make sense to focus the vision on a smaller area. But right now for context, this is the study area that we evaluated for the urban renewal feasibility. So the area does have identified priorities. Um, establish or create a common identity, enhance connectivity in the area. Um, and across the area, ensure a collaborative approach. Protect and promote the natural environment, foster mixed use development and expand housing options. So there are certainly a lot of uh, identified priorities and needs in the area. Um, but tying them all together in a way that really hits a community vision is what we're looking for. So next. Uh, and this graphic really summarizes the overall scope of work that we prepared. Yeah, ultimately we identified two main end products. On that we think would be the output of this visioning work. One is a set of guiding principles. So this is text, um, this is meant to be uh, short and to the point. But really identifying what it is that the community wants to see happen here. And then to go along with those guiding principles would be a land use and transportation plan. And that planning document would go into greater detail on exactly what sort of land uses and transportation infrastructure changes would need to take place in order to achieve the vision that's describing those guiding principles. So we know that those are the two documents um, that we want to see at the end of this process. And so this is showing the timeline on how we get there. Um, this is a, a year long timeline. This shows that the next couple of months would be taken for the procurement process. Putting out the RFP, interviewing consultant teams and selecting um, that winning consultant team. Uh, once work actually gets underway in September, uh, there'd be a whole host of tasks that uh, we've got grouped under phase one for project understanding. So this would be a lot of technical work uh, to lay the foundation for what the area really is today and what the existing plans are. Um, that have a bearing on, on how it can develop and change in the future. Um, that includes a kickoff meeting with the consultant team and a site visit. So that all of your consultants can be brought up to speed with the uh, conditions in the area on the ground. Um, a plan and code review to take a look at exactly what it is in the existing city plans and code. Uh, in terms of what could be developed here and whether or not those pose any barriers for the type of vision that the community comes up with later. A SWAT analysis can really take a look at the strengths, weaknesses and opportunities and threats of the area. Uh, with the intention of this being something that um, has a long shelf life. It isn't something that's going to become stale right away with unnecessary market analysis. Um, that's only good for a blip in time before the market changes again. And then a public involvement plan. Um, and a key element of this is that I, I think it is in the city's best interest not to identify upfront now in July, every last activity that's going to happen for public involvement six months from now. Um, but rather to bring the consultant team on board, work with them to come up with a shared understanding of exactly what these final documents are going to look like and exactly who in the community you want to get input from. And so spend those first few months of the project fleshing out that public involvement plan, which would then be implemented um, in phase two. The, the last task identified in phase one is the preliminary transportation analysis. Um, and that is, you know, assuming that this consultant team would have a transportation planning specialist on board. Making sure that they're getting their hands on all the necessary data that they need to be able to work with the community, come up with that vision and identify that transportation plan at the end. Traffic counts and future projected volumes, um, planned infrastructure projects that are funded or unfunded, all those kinds of things. So a lot of that technical work projected to take place um, in this phase one in the fall. Uh, which actually lines up pretty nicely to begin the true public involvement in the spring. It, it can be tough to do public involvement in that November, December time period anyway. Uh, given holidays and vacation schedules. So this shows that you'd be going out and soliciting input from the public, really in between winter vacation and spring break of next year. Um, and then come back in the spring. And now your consultant team would have all the technical work that they did in the fall. All the community input that they got in the winter and could then put together those final products that we've identified here. The guiding principles and the land use and transportation plan that in theory could be adopted, final documents right around this time next year. Um, so I will pause then, I think, um, to, or let's take a look at what other slides we have. Oh yeah, just to reiterate the council again for question. Um, does the council approve of the proposed program and work and timeline for the district two visioning is outlined in the scope of work? And with that, I think we're turning it over to you all for your input, questions, discussions, et cetera.
Thank you, Nick. Hit the wrong buttons here. Went on and off. Council Pratt, show your hand up. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm wondering, it seems from what I've learned and questioned um, since our last meeting that um, with the, the public input, I think, um, and you talked about the whole district area. I think um, a lot of this um, is driven, um, since a lot of this land is not owned by the city. A lot of this um, is going to um, be determined by input and um, willingness from the developers and land donors in this area. And also from um, the overriding governmental bodies that will be involved or involved in this area. So is there a way to kind of put them kind of at the front of the list for public input? So that will help us determine what's really feasible going forward?
Yeah, I absolutely think that they are a critical audience in your vision. So uh, obviously you, you don't want the vision to only reflect the desires of the private property owners. Um, but if you want a realistic vision, it needs to take into account um, what those private property owners are interested in and what they can make a profit on. Um, because you're not going to see redevelopment, um, if, if it's not something that the private sector can deliver on its own. With the exception again of publicly owned sites that you might control in the area. Uh, so that's, that's exactly the sort of reason why I don't think the initial scope of work that you put in the RFP that goes out to the consultants needs to be hyper-specific on, there's going to be this many open houses, um, this many meet and greets with local businesses. I, I do think that you want to take your time in the first few months of the project to come up with a detailed uh, public involvement plan. And so that's what's called for here. We sort of identify that public involvement is a key element of the project. And we identify the types of activities that would be uh, conducted there. And we do mention that property owners um, need to be one of the audiences that are involved in this. But I think you'd be working this fall with whatever consultant you select. That's going to actually be doing that public involvement to come up with the right plan that engages that audience in the appropriate way.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks for Nick. Scanning, scanning. Don't see any right now, so I'll throw mine in. So you were mentioning, you know, we went back and forth about the discussion about, you know, this number two urban result, urban renewal zone number two. About doing the full moose head or a subset of it. And you were thinking that maybe you want to do uh, in this initial RFP, the whole moose head. And I'm just wondering, um, does that increase complexity? Because you really have different kinds of areas within the moose head. And is, would it be better to maybe focus in one area so isn't as complex? What's your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I, I, I think that you could make the argument either way. I think it's a matter of perspective. Uh, and I think, you know, you as the city council, yours is the perspective that matters most here. Um, as opposed to my own. Uh, but I, I think you could definitely go either way. So if you think that ultimately the urban renewal area will include the full moose head. Um, then there is some logic to getting input from the public on all the components of it. Even if each one is a little bit different and has a different vision, a different purpose. Um, it can also help just in motivating those property owners so that when you do come down the road with an urban renewal plan. Um, that they aren't surprised, they haven't been left out of the loop, but they actually participated in these earlier visioning exercises. Um, so there, there are reasons why you might want to include them. I, I think you might try to take the middle ground approach of going out to the RFP, showing this total boundary. So that folks understand there is this broader area that you're interested in. But once you've got that consultant on board, really honing in and saying, you know, this is our central city. This is the downtown area. That's where we want to focus our attention on the vision. Um, but you know, consultant that specializes in public outreach. What are your thoughts on how we could also engage these property owners um, in the adjoining areas and get their input? I think that way you could also focus all of the public input on your true center city. Um, but still do the outreach to the property owners in the, in the neighboring areas. So they're not just completely left out of the process.
Okay, and you don't think that changes um, based on the um, sample? I mean, what's the title of it? Let me scroll up here in my packet. The uh, draft scope of work. That doing that, that full moose head, you think that they can achieve all these? And achieve all the goals and all the milestones? Um, the full moose head, full zone two, uh, as opposed to a subset, it wouldn't be a little easier or? I'm just, I, I can see your point that you want to have all the property owners involved from the whole proposed area number two. And then perhaps once you award the RFP that you have that discussion of where you think uh, we have the most possibility of a successful urban renewal, renewal zone being and shifting gears a little bit, but. Yeah, I just don't want to waste time and dollars and resources on areas. I'll pick on Bridgeport. I mean, I don't think in my mind, a million, you know, in the near future, Bridgeport would be included in urban renewal zone in my mind.
Yeah, that, that makes tons of sense. I, I, I absolutely see where you're coming from. Um, I, I, I still would like to pitch it to the consultants that you're going to be talking with.
Okay.
So I might include in the RFP, uh, even a specific question for them. That says, you know, here's our, maybe not in the RFP, but in the interview process when you've got a shortlist of firms you're, you're talking to. And say, thanks for providing your proposal. Um, you know, we, we showed you this whole area. Um, but what if we were focusing on a more specific area? You know, how would that affect your work program? How would that affect your budget? How would that affect the level of depth and detail you're able to go into there? Um, and then understand from them, you know, how big of an impact it is. Because I, I could speculate, you know, how I think different consultant teams might handle the different boundaries. Um, but I really do like trying to keep the scope of work now at the broad strokes. And really encourage you during that procurement process to work with the, the shortlist of consultants to find out what they think it would cost to do those different options.
I have like, that's good advice. Thank you. Other folks? Jeez, I think the heat's making us all quiet tonight. Or we're all tired because we haven't slept in two nights, but uh, Council Brooks?
I have, I, thank you for your presentation. I um, I don't have a specific question. I just want to clarify, just in case people are listening and don't know what the moose head is. It's the shape of the majority of the city as it stands. So I just wanted to clarify that in case anybody had questions about what we were talking about. Thanks.
Any other questions? Council President Grimes?
Thank you. Um, thank you for the presentation. I appreciated that. Um, I just sort of want to reiterate what Mayor Brubinik is saying about the idea of while leaving this scope open, if you will. You know, not spending a lot of time and resources and time on, you know, an area that like Bridgeport isn't super realistic about seeing that happening anytime in the near future. Or it's at least for this council's sunset, you know, timeline. So yeah, I appreciate leaving it open. I just want to make sure that since we don't necessarily, well, since we don't do the interviewing of the different people that put their um, proposals forward. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that, you know, when it comes down to it, there's going to be a slice of that that we're going to wall off to the table. So.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I, I definitely didn't want to imply that you have to go forward with the boundary that we've got here. Um, certainly if there are areas that you just think aren't worth including, go ahead and cut them out before you send that map out in the RFP. If there are other areas where you're on the fence and you think that it might be valuable uh, to engage the, the consultants to work with those property owners. You know, understand connectivity issues that they might have or understand ways that they might want to see, you know, land use and transportation change in their area. Um, then since you're doing a project and you're doing it on adjoining areas of the city. You, you might want to talk with that consultant team about including those areas. Um, so you know, I, I just think you have options, but you guys are in the driver's seat. And if there are sub areas of this that you don't think are worth um, spending, you know, consultant time and dollars, which are, are real resources. Um, by all means, you know, edit the map before it gets sent out.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem talking to the maximum number of people. Because I think something like this, because it, there's so many transitional areas between the horns of the moose head and then the body and all those good things. You know, it's kind of like the more the merrier. I just think this is going to be expensive and probably cumbersome. And I just want to make sure that we're being super careful with how we spend our resources on this and that we don't get bogged down time or money wise in areas that you know, are the least likely to get touched in the near future. So, but thank you. I, I, I like your ideas and I appreciate your direction.
Other comments? Just for example, what Council President Grimes is saying, you know, we, we look at the area uh, the east side of I five, northern part of the uh, suggested area. And that's all, you know, manufacturing, industrial, commercial. Uh, where I really don't envision a lot of uh, mixed use development, you know, with residential and retail. Whereas, you know, the area immediately off of I five here in our, what we call our downtown core. Would have that, you know, where we're looking for those goals of mixed use and maybe we're higher density and combining um, housing, you know, aged blending, all, all the really big goals we have versus, you know, up where 72nd is in that area where it's like, it's purely commercial. So it's like two different goals in my mind in those areas that you come back with, with a um, from the RP process, but it might be good to hear from those folks who that are in that area. Like you're saying, Nick, that we could at least hear them, hear what the opportunities are there. And then, you know, proceed with a subset as long as we can achieve all the milestones we're looking for in this draft scope of work. Uh, I see Council Hillier, then Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess because enhanced connectivity is one of the identified priorities. I can see why it would be important to at least get input from all groups. I, I completely understand uh, being appropriate with our resources. But if that is one of our goals, um, we need to consider that.
Council Brooks?
Um, thanks for everybody for the thoughtful deliberation. I too kind of, especially with retail, feels like there's a big reset right now, not just with COVID, but before COVID. Um, hearing from those um, business owners and um, hearing what they have, what they're thinking. Um, might help us be more informed for all of the commercial districts. Um, just a wider perspective. Anyway, that, that comes up for me. But I, I understand the concerns too. Um, but I appreciate Nick's advice on that. Thanks.
Oh yeah, it sounds like we're we're okay with the scope of work as, you know, presented in the work session here. Just knowing that, you know, the area might get a little contracted as time goes by as a result of this work that's done in this RFP. Right? So I think it looks like, you want to say something Jonathan? Looks like it.
Yeah, I just, I, I just wanted to uh, help clarify that discussion. Uh, the reason we left the study area abroad is just in case more priorities are a higher price tag. That boundary in the future, whether we study the entire area or not, could become an urban renewal. It can help fund those priorities in a different area. We're doing a similar uh, function in the southwest Salt Creek area. Where the northern district is pretty developed and we're using that northern district to help fund the smaller districts. So, but we'll, we didn't want to overwhelm you. We just wanted to make sure that you had all the options available to you at this time.
Yeah, it, it makes sense to do, look at the, at a higher elevation rather than getting closer in right away. You know, as Council Brooks says, let's, let's look at the whole picture and decide from there rather than ignoring something and it comes back and um, you know, bites us in the butt later on. So it sounds like we're all okay with the uh, staff moving forward with the request and getting an RFP out and getting some responses? Thumbs up? Alright. You got what you need Jonathan and Sherilyn?
Yes, sir.
I believe so. Thank you for your direction and your conversation.
Alright, thank you. Alright, so that was our main item on the agenda tonight as far as staff interaction. Uh, so we've got our uh, housekeeping to do. Uh, so for tonight, the pledge uh, will be led by Council Sacco. Uh, we don't have any uh, proclamations tonight. Any questions on the consent agenda tonight? Alright, okay. And then with that, we'll move into our council meeting agenda, our communications. And I'll start off with Council Pratt.
I have nothing other than to hope everybody's staying cool enough.
Alright, alright. Council Hillier?
Good evening. I too have nothing and uh, hope the best for this cooling weather.
Council Sacco?
I have nothing as well.
I think we're all burnt out from the heat here. And I've just heard the news that Corvallis is down to 80 already. Oh man. Never going to complain about 80 or 90 again, that's for sure. Uh, Council Brooks?
Um, I met with the Arts Advisory Committee since we saw each other last. And just want to commend all of the participants on our committee. Um, we are wrapping up, no pun intended, our, our box wraps. And we've been looking at locations and I think we've decided or are close to a decision about a new box wrap that'll be appearing over near the marquee. Um, on Boone's Ferry Road, kind of close by the um, bus stop. I think I'm correct on that. And um, um, I just want to say that the committee has been really mindful of not only logistics, because some of the roads are, as we all know, are owned, not owned by the city. So we can do certain things, like there was some conversation about honoring first responders and doing something by the hospital. But the locations there weren't um, able to do from the city. And then um, some of the also conversations around the diversity in our community has been really forward on, on that committee and um, as well as honoring the artists and the art um, from the area. So there may new, as this program continues, there may be new um, requests for, for art. Uh, that might go on these kinds of wraps. So just putting it out there for any artists in the community. Or if you know people that might be interested in contributing to um, the art. And I hope that everyone's seen the one that's over by the library that was our test um, wrap. So, and I think that's a wrap. Nice to see everybody.
Alright, Council Reyes?
Nope, nothing from me either. So.
Okay. Council President Grimes?
Thank you. Yeah, no, I have nothing to report, report wise. But I do want to thank Sherilyn and the staff for making the full center available as a cooling center for the community. And your response to not only helping the community stay safe, but everybody in but everybody in operations and all the employees because this is dangerous, miserable, miserable weather for everybody and people that still have to get out there and do their jobs. So thank you for getting on that and getting information out to the community so quickly. Hopefully, we're not going to run into this again for another thousand years. So thank you. Thank you.
All right. I was kind of busy these last couple of weeks. Start off with the Clackamas County Chair Mayor's meeting. There's a special meeting on the sixteenth of June where Maria Pope, the Chair and Exec CEO, President, head honcho, PGE, presented a report to Clackamas County Mayor, similar to what we had Ms. Pope do for us on the impact of the ice storm in Clackamas County. Clackamas County was really wowed by the ice storm. You can imagine the tree canopy that's in Clackamas County versus Washington County and the efforts that PGE had to do to clear trees and get the power flowing again. Big subject of the discussion was, how do you take care of, you know, they don't want to be cutting trees down willy-nilly in Clackamas County, but how do you select those trees that need to either be trimmed or taken out because of interference with power lines? So that was quite an interesting conversation with PGE. Later that night, Mayor Gibson from King City, the head of State of the City for King City. Very interesting areas, you know, they anticipated growth in King City. You'll recall that the UGB was expanded in their area. So they're going to have significant growth in the next few, in the next few years and how they're anticipating to lay out that work and handling the growth in King City. On the seventeenth, went to the 12th and Chamber of Commerce Board Meeting. Remember, I'm a honorary member and keeping in touch with what's going on there. Exciting news for them was that the BRC is extended for six months. So it's funded for another six months to help businesses through the recovery. On the twenty-first, I did my Coin TV Mayor's Monday. Again, five minutes flies by before you know it with the chit-chat, but I enjoyed doing it. Very early, but one thing I was kind of bummed out is I didn't speak with Ken Body. I like Ken Body. But it was fun. On the twenty-third, Professor Mitsui of PCC, the president of PCC, laid out where PCC is going from here on with classes and especially on workforce training, that's a big focus for PCC right now, in all the different locations. You might have heard that they're not going to require vaccinations, so that was a subject of discussion. But they're really going hardcore into workforce readiness. And then especially for folks who are challenged income-wise, they give them the ability to come to PCC either virtually or with some kind of assistance that they can take their job training classes that they need to, you know, increase their income. Later that afternoon, Sherilyn and Chief Steele and I had the opportunity to get a tour of Tri-County Gun Club. We spent a couple hours there between a briefing of their efforts to date and then actually seeing the different ranges and all the technology they're using to abate noises from emanating from their facility. We haven't had a chance to circle back yet on next steps, but in discussing with the members of the board, they are open to having open houses. So folks in the community can see what they're doing and what they're trying to do to increase sound abatement so it doesn't leave their property. A significant note is what I call the big pit. They're digging a new range on their property that approximately was a forty acres, thirty or forty acres, I think, Sherilyn. That's about thirty feet deep into the ground so the sound doesn't leave their property. They're still about a year away from opening that, but they've made significant efforts to build that and move those ranges that are on the top elevation-wise of their facility and get them off of there so the sound doesn't leave their site. But we're going to circle back with them and see how we can engage the community and get some possibly open houses with there so people can see what we saw the other day. On the twenty-fourth, West Economic Alliance had the Meet Mayors. There was twelve or thirteen of us, the Washington County Mayors. Each had three minutes to review what happened in the last year. And then we had Q and A. It was super enjoyable. Later that day, we had the Metropolitan Mayor's Consortium Meeting where we reviewed the legislative session. We were pretty proud that those bills that we supported, about ninety percent of them passed. And the ones that we weren't wild about, pretty much all of them failed. So a lot of work to work at the legislature to make sure the cities were protected and our residents were protected and certain things. You know, of particular importance is all the police reform and how the MMC was very supportive of Representative Bynum's efforts on police reform. Then I finished off the day with our former transportation person, Garrett Pryor, presented for ODOT at the Greater Portland Inc. Small Cities Consortium, the latest and greatest of the ODOT tolling pricing program. They are hyper-focused on diversion and figuring out what the diversion will be and how to pay for improvements to those roads that we anticipate traffic being diverted onto. What was the big shock to me was that, you know how we've all seen the pictures of where the gantries would be? You know, those where the toll booths, if you will, would be? They are, they are non-existent right now. They are looking at, of course, you know, basically it's going to be an overhead beam, if you will, that has some electronics on it that scans your license plate or your rapid toll. But they do not know where they're going to go anymore because it's limited by topography, a whole bunch of other things, because I asked Lucinda, we all remember Lucinda is from ODOT. You know, our assumption was there was going to be a gantry at Stafford Road, and she said, no, it might not be at Stafford. It might be, you know, further along in 205 towards West Lynn. And it cannot be on the bridge because the bridge vibrates too much. So they've got to figure out where they're going to put these gantries now too. So everything just keeps changing. Every time you get a new ODOT update, something, you get something new. So that's why I sent all of you the PowerPoint presentation and the latest and greatest from ODOT so you can review where we're at right now with ODOT and congestion pricing and all that good stuff. Then finally, was this Friday? It's a blur. Sherilyn and I got a terrific tour of the new PGE facility being built on 124th. It was pretty freaking toasty. Of course, we had to wear construction, you know, you know, gear. So we had the helmets on, the vest, the boots. I was dying. And there's no AC in that building where we're taking the tour, but pretty impressive facility. They're looking to open up in September, October with their employees. Two to three hundred employees will be there. And it's going to be state-of-the-art resiliency. In the event of an earthquake, that building's going to shake and nothing happens to it. It'll just move and sway with the earthquake. And they'll have two weeks of water and diesel to keep on chugging away in the event of an emergency. So it's pretty cool what they're doing there. As a techie guy, you guys see their network in their server room. That was the coolest room in the place and we didn't want to leave. And then after that, ran from that all sweaty to our first in-person five families lunch. So remember, that's Tiger, Twalton, Dorm, King City, and Sherwood, the five mayors. We all got together, had lunch, caught up, and reiterated our support for each other. And one of our biggest things is addressing 99W with the money that may be coming for infrastructure. In addition to interstates and bridges, we want some love given to 99W and get that thing updated through our cities. And that's it. So we've got about an extra twenty minutes to go stick your head in the freezer for a little bit and we'll come back at seven o'clock. So we'll see you guys back in twenty minutes.